I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, could we have a roll call? Christine?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting off this meeting tonight, we have the Human Services Committee. And as Chair, I will ask now if there are any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda this evening. Seeing none.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the portion of our agenda where we hear from citizens who want to address the Commission about Human Service Committee issues or concerns. Is there, are there any citizens tonight that wish to address the Human Services Committee? There'll be opportunities to address the other committees later in the meeting. Okay. Updates. Do we have any updates from Commissioners or from the Administrator?
None.
Conceptual initiatives? It's going to be an easy meeting. We have no old business. Under new business, we have the Community Health Needs Assessment Presentation by our Health Department Director, Dr. Annette Mercantone. Annette?
Hey. Hi. Thanks. I felt it was kind of time to get up here and do this for you guys. As you remember, we completed this health assessment several months ago. The full health assessment was presented down in the Donald Dodd Auditorium. Took about a good hour and a half to two hours. So what you're going to see is a very abbreviated form. If you have questions, you want more details about some of the things I'm going to talk about or mention, please let me know. So just to remind you, this was a research project that we facilitated, but it was a large community endeavor. It was about a year in planning and all of these people and resources were committed to it. And some in kind and some financially. I think we had all of our major healthcare providers that were part of that planning.
Dr. Mercantone?
Yes, sir.
Just back up for one second. Who's the bottom right MP?
Okay. He is the researcher we hired out of Chicago to actually do the, to do the survey. These surveys are very evidence-based. There's specific protocols and methodology. So that was, that was the firm. Marty Hill was the doctor who did it. Yeah, when we first got that, he had his name way at the front real big. And we said, "No, you've got to go down." So just to remind you, one of the unique parts of this survey, and this whole assessment, is that we were able to do it on a regional basis. So for the first time, we do have data that differentiates the health and responses from people from the southern portion of the community, western and eastern. And we did this roughly, you know, it's not really scientific how we divided it, but it was kind of based on population to try and peak the population sizes to the point where we could sample the right number of people. And overall, we had 1,200 samples. It took a long time, but with that number, we do know that the information is valid and can be generalized to the population.
Annette?
Yes, sir.
As you're going through the presentation, can we ask questions?
Yes, please. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like I said, this is very abbreviated, so there's a lot more information. So the good news, and this is the big picture one, the good news is everybody, or a lot of people, report very good health status. You might remember five or six years ago, 2010, we had a health assessment done. And overall, the reports were that people weren't feeling good. For some reason, their general health assessment was good or excellent. A lot of people reported good life satisfaction. They reported good walkable communities. They reported that they're getting routine healthcare, that they're seeing their doctors. Nine out of 10 have healthcare coverage. We'll see if that changes. Ninety percent reported enough to eat, and 86% said they always have the type of food they want to eat. And we thought this was interesting because there's a lot of discussion about food deserts and access to healthy food. But what's interesting, despite they report that, despite the fact, is you can see that not nearly enough are reporting actually eating fruits and vegetables. And one of the things I want to point out here, when we look at the self-reporting of well-being, which is very good, as you'll see later on, the actual outcomes of health, such as death, premature death, and morbidities are not so good. My sense is the community feels like they're doing really well, but when you actually hold that up to specific measurable outcomes, they're really not doing very well, which is probably why we rank so poorly on health issues. I just threw this in because I think this is important. We know that health is wealth, and wealth is health, and this is some of our economic status. Our unemployment rate's going down. Our median income is almost $50,000, but almost 1 in 4 people are making less than $25,000. 20% of our children are below poverty level, so we still have some significant issues with poverty. And educationally, I'd say we fare better than many communities. 90% are graduating. 17% have higher education. But look at here, 20% of our teens are still not graduating from high school on time, and over 13% of our live births are to mothers without a high school diploma. And that's significant because this strongly correlates with a lifetime of poverty for those children. They just, it's hard to get out of poverty when you don't have a high school education. So what's the perception of the community? And this is very interesting to me because there was two questions. The most important perceived problem that we have in the community and the most important health problem. And they differ from, and this is self-reporting from the community. And if you'll notice, the most important perceived problem here, almost 40% was alcohol, drug, and substance abuse. That's no surprise. We realize that's the issue. Jobs, jobs, education, and some of the other things that fall in place. But certainly alcohol and substance abuse, really far and above.
The, the jobs at 15%.
Mm-hmm.
That's saying that 15% of the population cannot find a job?
No, that says 15% of the population feels that the most important problem is the job environment and the lack of, lack of jobs.
Annette, I have two questions.
Sure.
What is the perceived problem with the environment? And most important to all of us sitting up here is, what is the perceived problem with politics and government?
I would have to go back to the research directly and see what the responses are. I don't know the answer. Now, I would assume environment would mean pollution. Generally, that's when people speak of environment, is contamination of the water, land, or air. I don't know what the concerns are with politics or government, although I would assume that means local politics and government.
That's what I'm assuming too.
It's Howard's issue.
We still do, we still do have our token Democrat. That might be our problem.
Yeah, yeah. Or vice versa. Okay, so, so I can go back and look at that, at least, and see if we have anything specific. There's very specific ways these questions are asked, so I'll do that for you.
I just thought all the rest of them were pretty self-evident, but those two, I didn't judge.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that. No one's asked me that question before. Good job. So this is interesting though, because the most important perceived health problem is cancer. Okay? Not a real surprise, since I started this job, everyone's always talked about how cancer is a big issue, cancer, cancer, cancer. Substance abuse comes right behind it at 20%, but there's difference in people's mind between community problems and health problems. And I think that's interesting because in my mind, there are no differences. You know, a problem is a problem. But the perception is still that cancer is still the primary health problem in the community. And of course, I'm going to show you, I hope, I think that's in here, that that's really not the case. Okay? We really don't have more cancers in this community. We haven't for a long time, but that is the perception. So this is a busy slide, but it does go through the incidence of diseases, okay? The prevalence means how much there is in the community in St. Clair County versus Michigan versus the United States. And there are two conditions, actually three, that we are higher, the red is higher, and there's asthma, both lifetime and current, and COPD, which is chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Okay, so they're pulmonary problems. These could be related to things like air pollution, which we do have a little blip with that in certain areas, but also smoking. And I'll show you some smoking data, because we do smoke more. Here's the cancer, of cancers, and you can see we're well below the state and the national average for cancer incidence. Heart disease, all the rest of them, we're pretty much below or on par with what the state is experiencing. But look at causes of death. So when you look at mortality or death data, this is startling. And blue is St. Clair County. And green is Michigan, and red is the US. So you can see, in almost all the disease entities and discussions, St. Clair County has, well, up to here, has a higher death rate for all of these diseases. So we're not, we're not sicker, we're just dying sooner and quicker.
In the previous slide, we were green, you know, in, in cancer, but then in this slide, we're...
This is, this is disease prevalence or incidence, so this is the amount of disease that we're reported of just having, and this is the cause of death. And not only the cause of death, but how soon a person's dying from it.
Doesn't that seem...
Doesn't that seem interesting? So, so it's not like we have more disease we're not responding appropriately to. We're not either catching it early enough, we're not treating it appropriately, or something's going on here that we have the successive amount of mortality, all the way down in diabetes. And you can't really tell from this slide, but if you look at the ratio of death rates from these, this is the biggest one. There's the biggest gap of, for diabetes. So when you look at the death rate from diabetes compared to the Michigan rate, we, we just seem to have disproportionately quite a bit more problems with it. So this is a really important topic, and this is why it's so important for us as I go on, what we have to do, our next steps. This is, in my mind, this is preventable stuff. This is clearly preventable. You know, the people in this community aren't sicker, they don't have less capacity to be responding to treatment. I think somehow they're missing treatment or they're getting into treatment late.
Would you have, further on in this, the average lifespan for St. Clair residents in regards to Michigan? Because that would relate, correlate right with this...
You would suggest it's less, yes. And I, and I don't have a total, but I can get that for you.
And more, I mean, there's got to be, out of 100,000 people, population, those are the death rates you have for that particular disease.
Condition.
Condition?
Yeah. It would be my, it would be my, my guess, and I would have to look at this, that our, our death rates, and I can say that because three, four years ago, when I started looking at community or county health rankings, you guys, I've shared county health rankings with you before. It's a national review of all these health indicators. And St. Clair County consistently comes in the bottom ranking statewide of this. And I, I've pulled that apart dozens of times, and the thing that rises to the top that gives us such a low ranking is mortality rates. It's years of productive lives lost. So not only are we dying more from these diseases, but we're dying at a younger age from these diseases. So it's a pretty significant finding, and I think it's something that we can sink our teeth into and really do something about. The good news is, this is something we can do something about. This is just a quick slide because you might be interested, some of you guys know that the western section of the county reported significantly better health, self-reported better health. They had better quality of life, they really did. And I'm trying to figure out why. And I can tell you that demographically, when I broke down education, median age, median income, it wasn't as dramatic as I thought. In fact, the Down River area has a higher median income than the western. So maybe it's just that good country living. I'm not sure exactly what that's about, but we do need to investigate that a little further. So this is just the summary slide. So life expectancy for men and women are lower than the state. We have a far higher age-adjusted mortality rate. And the two leading causes of death are the same for us, which is heart disease and cancer. However, our rates for death from these are higher. So it goes back to the idea that we don't have more of these diseases, we just don't seem to be doing as well. And then when you start looking at diabetes and chronic lower respiratory diseases, they're considerably higher. So we're not sicker, we're just dying earlier. Smoking is an issue. It continues to bop up on our radar. We have 3 in 10 are currently smokers. This is much higher than the state average. We have nearly 1 in 3 mothers who smoked during pregnancy. And I can tell you, if they, you break that down into demographics for our poor, our mothers who are poor on Medicaid, that number is much higher, closer to 50 or 60%. 1 in 4 smokers do eventually quit, but we need to do a better job with that. And 15% of people have asthma and 10% chronic up, because these are connected to the smoking. And I just wanted to add the smoking to the pulmonary disease, which I showed you earlier, is higher. So if we attack the smoking rates, I do think will affect some of those other disease entities. And then the other thing that's kind of risen to the top is obesity. And that's a national issue, but again, we do worse in obesity and being overweight than the average state or national levels for both adults and children. So what's interesting about the obesity and overweight is that, when I say demographics, I mean the age and distribution of these two conditions are different. So people who are obese tend to be poor, live in urban parts of our community, and have less education. But the overweight sector is our higher educated white...
How do you define the difference between those two?
It's, it's based on their height and weight and something called the BMI, the Body Mass Index. So it was, it was calculated because we asked people, and this is interesting, so we asked people how tall they are and how much they weigh. And I can guarantee you, they underreported those things, so...
So they were shorter?
You probably said they were shorter. Yeah, they probably cut their weight down by 10 or 20 pounds, but so this, you could estimate that this is probably a little higher than... So that's an issue, and we have some really interesting demographics on this showing the differences in populations and how that varies. Another area that we're very concerned about is our maternal-child health information. Nearly 1 in 2, 50%. Now, I don't know if you guys know what MIHP is. That's our program at the Health Department. It's a Medicaid program that allows women who are pregnant to get special home visiting from our nurses to help them with doctors' visits and prenatal care, et cetera. We do this assessment on all of them, and 50% of them are reporting stress, depression, abuse, or violence, 50%. That's a significant unacceptable number. 14 and over, over 14 per thousand children are abused and neglected. This is higher than the state average. We have 50% of births paid by Medicaid. That's not so unusual, but I think this is. And we have 27 infants that were born in 14. We have some more data that have neonatal abstinence syndrome. I've shared that with you before about the opiate problems. That means babies are born addicted to opiates and go through withdrawal. So higher than many of the state averages. So 60% don't have full vaccines, 50% aren't tested for lead. We have a lot of work to do in this, this demographic, in these women who are pregnant and with small children. Safe sleep, same idea. We have 1 in 3 infants are found unresponsive, are not sleeping in a safe sleep environment. They're not sleeping on their back. 2 out of 3 are current on safe sleep. So there are many deliverables that we can do. Here's the, 53% of mothers smoked anytime during their pregnancy. This is Medicaid data, 53%. We know that's related to SIDS and small birth weight. All right, almost done. Lead testing, this is a busy slide. This is Port Huron, where we do the majority of our testing. The purple, though, is the amount of housing built before 1950, which we know is a risk factor for lead, right? Lead in the, and if you look here, where we have a lot of potential lead exposure, we're really not doing a lot of testing. 48039 is Marine City. And then Jettow is 48032, over here. So we can do a better job in our outlying areas for lead. This is a slide I don't like because the colors change. Waiver rates, biggest waiver rates. Vaccine waiver rates are when a parent chooses not to vaccinate for non-medical reasons. They come to the Health Department, get a waiver, and then they go to school unvaccinated. Way biggest is the KPEC Community School District, and then second is the Yale. So we also know that the vaccine-preventable diseases seem to cluster in the areas where they're not vaccinated. And then Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth data shows us that, that 7th graders, 9th, and 11th graders, from 30 up to 40% of them are reporting hopelessness, and that 1 in 5 are seriously considering suicide. This is a high number, higher than the state average. So we have kids that need better suicide prevention, exposure, and teachings. Finally, next steps. And I, I have this slide, I should have it updated, but we do have, the next step, very, very important, is formation of a community health improvement plan. Many communities have done this, and it's a roadmap, a strategic plan to improve on these outcomes. And our first meeting to form the Steering Committee is going to be September 13th at 2 o'clock. I'm sorry, I don't put this up there, but I will get it to all of you. We do need your input and your interest in this. I don't all have to come, but we want the board to be involved and to understand what's going on. The Steering Committee is going to be driven by Metro Planning. They're going to assist us with the process. And we hope that within a year, we will have a well, well-crafted plan to reduce some of these numbers. So we do want a variety of people to be involved, including local government. So, we need you. And questions? Like I said, very abbreviated. For each one of these chronic conditions, I can tell you that we have a whole range of information about where, how, and, and what, but that's what we're going to tease open in this, this chip planning, health improvement planning.
Just on a kind of a side note, where did the idea come from that St. Clair County has so much cancer in it?
I don't know. You guys tell me. I've only been here 25 years, and I can tell you, it's been around for as long as I've been.
Forty-some years, and that's all I've heard since I've been here, is that we have an extremely high cancer rate, but it doesn't show that way.
It doesn't show. And I checked it 20 years ago, and I checked it 10 years ago, and we're checking it now. We'll continue to monitor that. There are little pockets that happen, and that's true, but overall, our cancer rates are not in any way excessive. I don't think we have to look at cancer as, as an exposure issue. I think we have to look at cancer as how do we find these cancers early, detect them, and treat them properly.
And a last question, it's a little off-target, but anything on the Wilms tumor? Has there been any more reports at all?
You remember that.
Oh, of course.
Yes. We have, I checked, as of last year, there has been no new cases reported in vital statistics since 2011. There will be another one, but they're rare. So I think what we saw, I don't, first of all, I don't, we never found a smoking gun. And although it was statistically significant, we're talking about a very small number still of people. And I think what we saw was just a little blip on the radar. I don't, it doesn't appear to be any ongoing issues with it.
It was an anomaly of sorts.
I do believe it was, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Any other questions?
Commissioner? Any other questions? Comments for Annette this evening?
Thanks.
Thank you, Annette.
Please stay engaged. I'll come back and give you an update in a few months and let you know.
Give us our answers to our questions.
I will.
And I, I really enjoy the graphics in your presentation. It's the second time. I, I think they're...
I think we're getting better. We need to make this engaging to people who don't like data, so it's kind of hard for us, data walks, but, thanks.
Thank you.
Carl, this being under new business, do you need a motion?
Next on our agenda is Library Board Reappointment. What's the pleasure of the commission? Anybody?
I'll make a motion that Ms. Kathleen J. Wheelahan fill the position.
Second.
Support. Prove.
Were we, were we making the appointment tonight, or were we sending it on to the board?
Forward it to the full board.
Okay. Thank you.
It's good till September?
The end of this month. I believe it's August 12th.
August. Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Are there any other matters concerning the Human Services Committee that need to come before the committee tonight? Hearing none? We have for information only the St. Clair County Health Department points of interest.
Motion to receive and file?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would someone like to move to receive?
Motion to receive file packets.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I always look to keep it right close. We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Over here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here. Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Updates from any Commissioners? None. Any conceptual initiatives? Seeing no old business. Under new business, we have agreement for law enforcement services for the Anchor Bay School District. We have, under Sheriff Buckley here, for a 45-minute presentation.
Parred down from the hour and a half that I originally wanted. Good evening. Before you have the contract for law enforcement services with Anchor Bay School District, it will begin this year in 2017 and continue through the first part of 2020. It's a little bit of a different contract than we're used to because of, it runs school year to school year as opposed to calendar year. There are very few changes in the contract from the way it's been in the past few years. We're very happy to have the contract with Anchor Bay. We've had it for, again, for several years. It's a great way for us to have contact with those high schoolers in that large school. I believe that the, having the deputy there, having contact with those teenagers has been a benefit, both the school and the county itself. If there are any questions on the contract itself, I'd be happy to...
Tom, the only question I had was on Exhibit A 24. It says deputies will not be available for special events such as athletic events. My understanding was that you guys did cover those events. Is that just because it's not in the contract, they pay extra for that? Is that...
That's correct. We don't, it's not an automatic, and it's up to the school. They contact us several times a year for additional deputies. I do know that the school resource officer...
They need you, they'll call you, and you don't...
That's correct.
...cover those, and it's not in the contract.
It's not an automatic, and we're not, we just didn't want to promise them that we would be there for everyone.
Do we get reimbursed for the overtime?
We do. Yes.
Good. Does anybody else have anything? I mean, it was a little shorter than 45 minutes, but...
I tried.
Pretty...
Motion to send us onto the full board then?
Support.
We have motion in support to send the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
2018 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant application. It's a $100,000 grant. $75,000 is federally funded.
Community mental health is going to pick up 25% of the balance, and the remaining portion is going to be picked up from the sheriff's commissary fund, $6,740, to take us to $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that this item be forwarded to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support to send to full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters at this time? Seeing none. Motion to receive and file?
So moved.
We have motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adjournment?
Move we adjourn.
Support.
Motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners? Bill? Greathop?
Yeah, I attended today down on the Riverwalk. They had, BPAC had a meeting down there, and the initiative to remove the St. Clair County River from an area of concern. And then, when they started this out about 10 years ago, there were 10 items on that list of concern about the St. Clair River. They whittled it down to four, and then this year, two more came off the list, so there are only two items remaining on that list. It was a nice display, a nice show of people, a lot of support down there. Congressman Mitchell was there with his staff. Dan Lowers was there. Somebody from Stabinow's office was there. So it was a good show in that respect. Everybody had a lot of good things to say. Everybody was supportive of keeping the funding that we have in the Great Lakes Initiative going, the one that Trump wanted to ax. And we pretty much have some support that it's going to be in place the way it sounded. So it was a good turnout, good press will be coming out. Probably tomorrow, Bill, there'll be some things on the radio and also in the paper about it, so just take a look for it. It was good stuff.
Howard, do you...
Excellent.
The two items remaining, are they repairable?
Yes, they are. I don't recall exactly offhand what it was. One of them had to do with, had to do with animals in the water creating some sort of an issue, and I'm not quite sure what that issue was. And the other one was something similar to that, but yes, absolutely repairable. We just have to take a little time to get her done. The Canadians were also there, by the way, and full support. They're talking about, I think, $40 million coming to help the cleanup process because that BPAC, there's two people, one from the American, one on the Canadian side, and they worked together on this thing. They're making some good progress. It was, it was good to see it. And this is all part of, you know, everybody talked about what they did and how they went. And when they were done, I was not on the agenda, but I wanted to get up and address just briefly what happens to some of these projects afterwards. For example, in my area, there were four different projects that transpired. The Cotterville Township softening of the shoreline along there, which then was converted into a park for Cotterville. So a lot of money was spent to do that, but then it was converted into a park. The Crispin, Blue, or Crispin Drain was cleaned out, and that was, when that was completed, it now becomes part of our Blueways system, and it becomes a, Blueways for canoeers, kayakers. Small boats can get up there if they want to. In the Marine City dredge cut, they've been cleaning that out. They're almost done cleaning it out. They've already done the rock protection out in the river area. Once they finish that last bit of it, then Parks and Recs, Mark Broschu and his group, have met with the city of Algonac. Once we can show that that will be controlled with the Frag Mities, then good chance we'll put a parking lot with a canoe kayak launch in there. And then the other part of this project that you don't see, there's two underwater reefs that were put in, one in the middle channel, one in the north channel. And as I mentioned today at the event, you can tell the fishermen are out there like crazy fishing because you can hear the freighters with their five short blasts. And if you know what that means, that means get out of the way. That's a danger signal. I hear them day and night because the fishermen are out there blocking the way on these freighters. In fact, there was a good article in the paper today. Jim Block wrote a good piece on freighters and fishing boats and the interference that's causing in that area. But, but the spawning reefs that they put in there are working perfectly. The sturgeon population is growing. The walleye, or pickerel, whatever you want to call them, depends on where you come from, that is growing. They were supposed to see some white fish in this area from those, but nobody has reported seeing those yet, so it is working. And so the point that I was making was not only do they do this to make it an area of concern, but there are follow-up applications that can result from this money that's being spent in the area.
Any other comments? I was golfing with Down River fishermen, and he was complaining about the fact that he went out walleye fishing, and he had his limit within an hour and a half. And he said, "It wasn't even worth it to put my boat in."
Well, what we're finding in that area right now is there are a lot more fish, but they're not the big ones. You know, when we run our pickerel tournament fishing contest, the pickerel tournament is a fishing contest, it was nothing to get six, seven, eight-pound walleyes. We don't get those anymore. The winners now are five, maybe a six-pounder. A lot of people are bringing in two and three pounders because they're just smaller fish, but a lot more of them. Much better eating, by the way.
Yes, smaller. Okay. Any other items? Any conceptual initiative from none? No old business? New business? The tap grant for Grashet Trail Engineering Services contract. Mark, did you want to comment on that?
Good evening. We're asking for approval of a contract with Project Control Engineering, who put together our grant application for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant to build a bike path from the Park and Ride on Grashet Road at I-94, under I-94, to Pickford Road. So this is the next step. We've got conditional approval of the grant. The next step is have our engineers do the engineering, get approval, and then there would be a formal grant contract next spring to do the work.
Any questions for Mark? Commissioner Rushing?
I believe I have three of them. Your estimated project cost is quarter million dollars roughly, and you're going to start potentially anyways, if everything goes forward, spring of 2018. Scope of the project, if you do get started in 2018? Is this a six-month project, three months, or do you know yet?
The gentleman sitting next to you probably would be better qualified to answer that than I. It would be a short duration. It is just surface improvements, some catch, some culverts and asphalt paving. So it would be probably a two-month job.
It's going to be about three inches of asphalt, Estes? Asphalt?
Yep.
Okay. Was this bid out? Because I'm looking at, it's $54,000 roughly. Was this...
No, this was not bid out. Project Control did the grant application, and we, those numbers were included in the grant application. And so, no, we did not bid it out.
Just looking at the breakdown, $24,000 for engineering design and $30,000 for administration and observation, and I just wondered if that was in line and without a...
Well, I know the administration and observation for a federally funded grant is pretty extensive. They have to do a lot of paperwork and...
Without it being bid, it didn't have it's on?
Right. I understand.
All right. That's all I have.
I assume that we're going to send this grant request on to the full board?
Make that a motion.
Make our motion. It's been moved and supported. I forgot who supported it. Commissioner Dunn. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Now we have the Goodles Barn painting contract.
Make a motion to approve. Send it to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark? I have one. Commissioner Tamian? The low bidder is substantially lower than all of the other bidders. Are we confident that this company has the ability to do the work?
Once we, once we had all the bids, we had that conversation with the contractor. If you're familiar with the two main barns out there, they're huge, and most of the work is going to be done from a lift. And that contractor has a brother that rents out the lifts, and we believe the majority cost differential is getting the lift for less expensive from his brother.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Thank you. The Columbus site improvement final change order.
I'd move to, move this to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions about change order number three, which is a credit of $8,736? Generally, not a whole lot of questions about credits. Did you have anything? I don't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Columbus Playground Equipment Purchase.
I sent an email out to you all yesterday. I was on the road all day today, so... We have a price quote from the contractors representing, or the vendor representing Landscape Structures, which was the provider that was picked by the playground committee. They have a contract with the National Joint Powers Alliance National Contract, so in lieu of bidding, we are accessing a national contract for these playground equipment. This is to purchase and have the equipment shipped to the site separately. We will bid out, we're in the process of bidding out installation. In the past, you'd often have the provide, the vendor providing the equipment, do the installation, and you never knew price for life. So now that they have certified playground safety equipment installers, we will get multiple bids and get a better price. And we expect at your September meeting to have multiple bids for the installation of the equipment. And due to the timelines, if we could maybe pre-prime the pump, consider that installation contract for final approval at the September committee meeting. That would be helpful.
Commissioner Rushing, I'm sorry.
What is your approximate cost for installation? Because this is pretty substantial for the playground. It's got phase one and phase two. Is that included in this price?
No, this price only includes phase one, does not include the little pavilion, does not include the outlying player, smaller, lower elementary play elements. By doing it multi-phase, we get the main element in, can tweak the design, know what's working, or maybe in our original plan, might not be the best location. We're still talking about what's the best location for the little pavilion to provide supervision for both the playground and the sledding hill, so...
Do you have an estimate across for installation for phase one?
No, I asked contractor, the provider, for that, and he did not give me that price. So I do not know that. And these are, again, certified playground, you know, safety on playgrounds and liability concerns are huge, so, you know, and back in the day, a lot of times you'd have volunteers install. At this day and age of litigation, you have a certified company of installers do the installation.
This little history as a township supervisor, we installed a playground, much smaller Riley Township, but the playground needs an inspection. And one of the slides, it was off a quarter inch. And we had, because the foot, you can't have a child's foot, and they had measurements, specific measurements, and it was out of tolerance, so we had to get that piece of playground repaired.
Yeah. That's a great example about how careful you have to be. We have two employees on our staff that are now certified as playground inspectors because we are obligated to inspect our, we have staff, look at them daily, but we have the certified inspectors do formal inspections a couple of times a year to deal with issues like that.
You've been working on installation quotes and bids prior to because you want this finalized potentially at September committee meeting.
The, and we met with the playground company yesterday with our landscape architect finalized everything, and we hope to get it done on bid net next Friday and have bids for you at the September 8th or 9th committee meeting.
Could you, could you have it at our regular board meeting yet this month?
I think that would be too tough a timeline. We want to give the contractors at least 10, 10 business days to be able to respond to the requests for proposals.
What about...
The good news is this is the off-season. The busiest season for playground companies is during the summer school recesses when all, that's when schools want to fix or update their playgrounds. So a lot of the contractors are now more available in the fall to do the installation. But that'd be tough to turn around that quick to do a...
If you want this for final action in September at our committee meeting, would you be able to get out email information to all the commissioners as soon as you...
Yeah, we'll send you a bid tab as soon as we open the bids, even before, you know, and then usually there's a lag of two or three days for consultant to review the bids with our maintenance and operations supervisor. But we can get you the numbers right as soon as we open the bids.
Just an obvious question. If you don't know the cost to install it, and you're buying the equipment for the playground stuff, and having it delivered prior to, are you sure it's going to fit and all that? And it can be installed for a product you're purchasing without having that done prior to?
Well, they, the installers are familiar with the manufacturer. I mean, there's a, you know, one of the installers is going to be the in-house, one of the bidders will probably be the in-house installer for Landscape Structures, but there'll be other competitive companies competing for the work. And there's a four to eight-week lag time from your approval, final approval, so being able to do a two-step with the installers bidding later, we hope to have the installer contract ready to go when the equipment is ready to be delivered.
I'll be the devil's advocate because you're going on the assumption that it's going to get approved, we'll buy the equipment, or it doesn't approve it for final action. Now you've got a bunch of equipment that's not going to get installed. I'm just being...
True. I understand.
What are they going to do with this project altogether?
Any other questions? Commissioner?
I think Dave was asking, this has been looked at by, right, I mean, you didn't just open a magazine and point at a picture and say, "Let's get this and hope it works." Right, this has been set up and it's, there's a spot to put it?
Right.
And it's been designed by the...
There's been like a month-long, after the committee picked out what they wanted, and that included representatives, two board members from Columbus Township Board, which we always try to include the local elected officials in the process, as well as a couple of the park commissioners. And then there was like a three to four-week period of questions and answers back and forth to make sure what we, what we were ordering, asking for a price was appropriate. And one of the committee members is an ADA advocate, who's the, I think, the chair of the Blue Water Access Team, to look at it from an ADA perspective, which is another part of the puzzle for public playgrounds. It has to meet safety standards and Americans with Disability Act laws.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? All in favor, say...
We don't have a motion.
I make a motion to send to the...
We're not going to have that. We're not going to have that.
No, this is for the equipment.
This is for the equipment.
Oh, okay.
I move that we send it to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a request from the landfill for final action. The card connect agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we move item 7E to the full board.
No.
Oh, this is final action. This is for final action, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. It's been seconded by Commissioner Rushing. Okay. Any questions with regard to this?
Just one. Carrie, could you give us a brief explanation on this?
This is the new software that will allow them to accept credit cards to go with their scale.
Okay, all in favor, oh, we should roll call.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tamian?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greata?
Yes.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes. Smith Creek Landfill Report. I would entertain a motion that it be, I didn't see it. I didn't think about it. It's on the agenda, but there was no attachment. Oh, okay. We'll pass on. Other environmental matters?
Just one, since we're talking landfill stuff, I received a phone call from a couple of residents out there earlier about a little bit stronger odors than normal. And what that was, was we received some materials from a, I guess, an old landfill. They were doing some material moving from that and dumping it out of their site that was smelt worse than normal. So that was just a temporary blip. So it's nothing, nothing life-threatening. So if you get anybody that said the landfill's been smelling worse than it has for the last 30 days, there was just some particular materials that smelled worse than others, so.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, just one. Met with Commissioner McCoy, or Supervisor McCoy from Ira Township on a road matter. But in the conversation, he brought up the trash hauling contract. And he should be contacting Matt Williams because their trash hauler wants to put in an additional cost for this year of approximately $20,000 on the residents. He's probably going to take care of it with the general. But he will be contacting Matt Williams and working out potentially doing a direct bill to the county, which will save him increases in trash hauling that their suppliers kind of doing.
Wow. That's a, that's a pretty good hit for the township to have to take. Okay, I, the Park and Rec monthly financial documents were there. I would entertain a motion that they be received and filed.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. At this time, a, a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
We adjourn.
And we move, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You finally got him to meet you halfway.
Yeah. This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Greata?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Is there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I would like to have a motion to accept it.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives? Seeing none, no old business. We'll move on to 7A, new business. 7A, contract approval request from the federal armored truck.
Motion to send it on to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? Just one, does that compare with previous, Carrie?
Yes, it's pretty similar. There were a few minor changes to the frequency and the different drop-off points.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, copier maintenance agreement, prime office innovations?
Motion to send to the full board.
Board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passed. This time, do we have any other Ways and Means matters? Seeing none, information only.
I've got something, and then Bill Greata, you can help me with this. So, if anybody has Verizon service, probably around Christmas time, somewhere in there, the services, you drive along the waterways. I happen to go from Port here into Marine City, you know, every day, twice a day sometimes. Bill, I know you do too, and you actually reached out to Verizon to talk to them about that particular issue. I did contact the, I forwarded the information to the Times Herald today, and maybe, Bill, you could help us out with this. Basically, they need people to respond if they're having poor service issues, and I think anybody that travels that route knows it very well, okay? And essentially, you need to have people call and complain, for better lack of choice of words, about the service before they'll address the issues. And there's some, there's some information here in this particular email. Bill, you want to chime in?
Yeah. I, I tried going through legislative offices in Lansing to try to reach out, and we haven't had any luck. So I reached out on my own today and I managed, or yesterday, and I managed to get into Tier Two tech support. And what he asked me to do was to record my number, and he gave me a ticket work number, and he said, "Have anybody that's having any sort of an issue call in, in the next few days. Use my ticket number," and they will lump that all together. As Chairman Bowman said, I cannot make a phone call and keep it anywhere between Elginak and Marysville, up and down that river. You just can't do it. It won't work. Nothing works. The apps don't work. It's just been horrible. I put in, I live 1.9 miles from the closest tower at one point, and my service was fair. They've added two towers since then to my area. I now have one two miles to my north, 1.9 to the south, and I have another one 400 yards from my residence. And with those three towers, my service is worse than it has been. They explained that they have turned the power down, and they are in the process of trying to get it turned back up, but they need more people to respond. It isn't working. I made the same request last night at my Lions Club meeting, and the guys are calling in. If you call Verizon number, just ask for Tech Two support. Don't try to go through Tech One. Go to, just say you need Tech Two support. And I'm going to give you this number right now. I, I know you won't be able to write it down.
Actually, if we could, maybe, Bill, anything you can do to help us, and we would forward this, see us after the meeting, we'll forward the email information to you.
We'll, we'll get it out there somewhere so that you can pick up this information and then make the call. And we're not, we're not bashing Verizon. We're only saying that based on what they told us, they need to hear from us that it's not working right. That's what they need to hear. So.
Anything else? Okay, now information only. Have none, do I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
At this time, I would move that we go to closed session, and at the end of closed session, adjourn the meeting. Support.
All in favor?
And the purpose is?
Collective bargaining and negotiating strategy.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.